Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Keys Gamara.
Here.
Ms. Bukarski.
I'm here.
Ms. Omeish.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Yeah.
Mr. Frisch.
Here.
Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Here.
Ms. Keys Gamara, I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Okay, she's not yet with us. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on March 2, 2021, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Thank you for moving that, Ms. Omeish, seconded by Ms. Darnak Kofax. All in favor? Ms. Omeish, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Ismael Heiser, Ms. Merritt, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys Gamara, and myself, and that is with, that is 11 with Ms. Corbett Sanders away from the table. Thank you. At this time, we are going to begin our work session. Our meeting manager is Ms. Bukarski, so I will invite her to begin. Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
I am so sorry, I see two hands. I don't know if I missed something. Ms. Tolan. Thank you. It is all yours, Ms. Bukarski.
I thought we were going to take a short break maybe, but I may have misunderstood that, so I will go ahead and start. So, good afternoon to everybody. We are here today to talk about the 2021-22 school calendar. We know this topic has garnered lots of feedback and interest, and we have continued and will continue to engage with our communities. And this Board is very committed and dedicated to finding the best possible, crafting the best possible school calendar for next year to meet all the needs of our community and do what is best for kids. And with that, I think Dr. Braybrand has a short message before we go on to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. I appreciate it very much. I do want to share that staff does have a presentation for you today that we're going to go over framing some of the conversation around the calendar work that we have done thus far, share context around the task force work that we did around the calendar, and review some absence data. I also, though, want to share that we did come out of a closed session, and we did talk about some legal issues around all of our calendars and being sure that we are supporting all of our staff and students as a staff presents a calendar to the School Board, and we have presented three of them to you. We want to be sure that we are doing our best to address all of the concerns of our staff and students, and we're going to continue to work, listening to our stakeholders, but also working with our Division Council to be sure that all of the calendars or any of the calendars that we're presenting to you are, address any legal issues around our students and staff. And we're committed to doing that. I am personally committed to making sure that we see this calendar process through and bring the Board a responsible calendar that reflects our community and reflects our staff, that addresses their concerns, and that really helps unify our school system and our community. We don't want a calendar process, and I'm sorry that a calendar process has been divisive to some in our community. That's never been our intent, but sometimes even when you have good intentions, you can have an impact that provides hurt. And I apologize for the hurt that some in our community have felt around this process. We're committed to getting it right, and we will work through all of the issues, including legal issues, to be sure that we bring you calendars that reflect the very best of how we can bring our community and our staff and students together. So, we look forward to sharing this presentation and taking your questions at the appropriate time, Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I think we can go ahead and begin with that staff presentation.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. And I will, if we could pull up our presentation around the 21-22 standard school year calendar, and if we can go to the very first slide. We're going to talk about here in just a moment, we have our Chief Equity Officer, Dr. Williams, who will help us in framing the conversation, which is so important and one of the things that I recognize we could have and should have done better as we began this conversation well over 18 months ago with many in our community. She'll be sharing some appropriate framing as we talk today and the Board talks today and in the weeks ahead as we adopt a final calendar for next year. You'll also get some calendar committee and religious observant task force historical context and some timelines of the work that that task force has done. And then we will review some absence data to take a look at our absences for staff and students to see how that looks as we look at already the calendars that we have before us and what implications it may have for a final calendar recommendation. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Williams to talk a little bit about framing the conversation.
Good afternoon, everyone. And the slide that you had before you really lays out historically how these issues have been thought about from the perspective of equity and access, which is a really important foundation for us to think from. And so, historically, there has been what would be characterized in construction of calendaring, the idea of just exclusion, not recognizing the plurality of the populace in terms of how decisions about observations of religious holidays and cultural observances might be made. So, they are sort of one way to think about these ideas, and that was generally what was reflected in the decision-making process. Secondarily, there was a phase where we used or applied the lens of assimilation, and I liken that to colorblind decision-making, where the generalizations that we might make across those decisions are applied equally irrespective of if they fit or if they honor traditions or not. And then the more contemporary space that we find ourselves in is one of pluralism, where we really wrestle with the larger questions of what does it mean when I think about a multiracial, multi-ethnic, differently-abled, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all of the ways in which diversity might show up across the spectrum of both religious and cultural traditions. What does it mean to be inclusive? And that really frames the way in which I would invite us to consider issues of equity and access across the conversation that we will advance. Next slide, please.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Excuse me. So, I wanted to provide some information again about the background of the Calendar Committee. So, our first Calendar Committee was formed back to support the development of the 2018-2019 calendar. Prior to the 2018-2019 calendar development, feedback was solicited from various stakeholder groups, which are listed there on the slide, in a very independent fashion. So, we, team would visit each of these groups and have a conversation around the calendar and solicit that input. Next slide. When the Calendar Committee was formed in 2018-2019, stakeholder groups who previously provided feedback were brought together to the same room and had an opportunity to discuss the various calendar options together. The Committee also provided an opportunity for additional community representation via the Virginians Organized for Interfaith Community Engagement to have a voice as part of the conversations around the calendar development. Next slide. At the February work session, we shared that the Religious Observances Task Force played a role in providing feedback to the Calendar Committee as they draft, developed draft calendars for the school year 21-22. The Religious Observances Task Force was formed as a result of a July 25, 2019 School Board follow-on motion, the language for which is found on this slide. And I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Armando Perry, our FCPS Ombudsman, and Mr. Perry will provide some additional information around the work of the Religious Observances Task Force.
Good morning, Mr. McDonald. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize that, I'm sure there will be a number of questions, so my comments will be brief. As pointed out, and I want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to share my video. As noted on the slide, in the fall of 2019, I was asked by our former Chief Equity Officer to organize and facilitate the work of the Religious Observances Task Force, recognizing that it's quite a challenge to invite an inclusive group of stakeholders. It was determined that we would work with the Fairfax County Interfaith Coordinator to cast as wide a net to bring as many voices to the table. The participant list that was originally developed was shared with the previous Board, and any suggestions from previous Board members to invite additional representatives of the religious diversity of our county, those, all of those were followed up on and invitations were sent. We did have a diverse group of faiths represented, were included the Baha'i faith, Christian faith, Hindu, Jewish, Muslim, and Sikh members of the community. If we could go to the next, well, I will say, we started in December, and going to the next slide. I'm sorry, let me advance here. So, due to the disparities in the numbers of each religious group, for example, there might be some faiths that had five representatives who attended and other faiths that may only have one, it was a decision, there was a decision made that all decisions would be made using a consensus process as opposed to voting. What we found was that that would ensure that all team members would agree to support the ultimate decisions that were offered, even if it was not everyone's favorite choice. It ensured buy-in from all members, and the likelihood therefore of success would be more secure, as well as it, members could then strive to make the best decision for the group as opposed to just competing interests of any particular group. And then finally, it ensures, a consensus process ensures that all perspectives can be taken into consideration. As a result, in January of 2020, the Committee, or the Task Force, I should say, recommended that Fairfax County adjust the calendar to grant student and staff holidays for major holidays, and they provided a list of examples of Christmas, Diwali, Eid al-Adha, Eid al-Fitr, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, et cetera, so other faiths as well. The work of the Committee continued, where in February of 2020, that recommendation was shared with the Calendar Committee. And if we could go to the next slide, please. The work of the Task Force continued. We had presentations from Instructional Services, from the Social Studies Team on practices. If you refer back to the original language, it was not only calendar, but it was also other practices with the Division. We did receive presentations from the Social Studies Team. The Task Force then made a number of recommendations regarding instructional practices, instructional planning, and caring culture, which were outlined in the end-of-year 2019-2020 Ombudsman Report. And I believe that takes to the end of my statements there. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more slide. Thank you for bringing that one up. In July of 2020, the Religious Observances Task Force was placed on hold, awaiting clarification on its role and for future work. Thank you.
Good afternoon. At our previous work session, there was a request for student and staff absence data. A detailed chart has been posted to Board Docs, which provides student and staff absences on the dates of various observances over the past five years with comparisons to the average absences for that day of the week. When we reference average here, we are referring to the average absences for a calendar day of the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. And the averages were calculated by taking the sum of absences on that day of the week over the course of the year and dividing by the total number of dates. When looking at student data, we see that absences exceeded the average for the following observances listed here, so both Eid's, Lunar New Year, Orthodox Christmas, and Good Friday, Veterans Day, and Yom Kippur. Rosh Hashanah and Diwali never have, or did not have any instances where they exceeded the average absences. Next slide, please. When looking at absence data for staff, we see that absences exceeded the average for all of the listed observances. So, again, Diwali, both Eid's, Lunar New Year, Orthodox Christmas, and Good Friday, Rosh Hashanah, Veterans Day, and Yom Kippur. Additionally, while Indigenous Peoples' Day has been an ongoing holiday for students, it has been a workday for staff the past three years, and staff absences have exceeded the average absences on that day as well. Next slide. After the calendar drafts were posted on June 28, a calendar survey was administered from June 29 to July 10 to parents and staff. And on this slide, we have provided a summary of highlighted feedback, which was previously shared at the last work session on February 2. The full survey results are posted as a separate attachment on Board Docs. As has been consistent from year to year on past surveys, again, a top priority from survey respondents was maintaining a two-week winter break. For when the school year should end, 70% of respondents support the school year ending sometime during the first two weeks of June or the first half of June. For when the school year should begin, 46% of parents and staff support schools starting one week before Labor Day, and 21% support schools starting two weeks before Labor Day. And with regard to teacher workdays, 54% of parents and staff preferred a kind of use of full days off for that work instead of early release days. And with that concludes our slides, so I'll turn it back over to Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you. Very short the presentation, but I think you give us a lot to discuss, and I will now open it up to my colleagues to ask your questions or to share your thoughts about next year's calendar and priorities and how we move forward. I see Ms. McLaughlin. You are first up. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Dr. Braybrand, I would like to say that I'm very troubled at where we find ourselves here today. First of all, the PowerPoint presentation does not present for the Board or the public the actual data, and I've just asked staff to post it on Board Docs, where your team did some initial but not very detailed analysis on some of the proposed dates that were recommended by the Religious Task Force. And this, this data needs to be important for the public to understand in context. There's broad generalities here, but the bottom line is that in the analysis that the public will see, on average Fairfax County Schools has anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 students out on a given day, and when you look at the data on these proposed holidays, you pretty much will only see a differential on two of the holidays that relate to Muslim holidays in terms of any significance, and even then it's about an additional 4% to 5% students being out. So, where we sit right now that concerns me is you, your staff, no one's talking about how do we build a calendar that looks at the needs of all students, students in poverty, working families, our employees? How do we build a calendar that addresses special education needs when we disrupt learning? We have no mandate from the Board of Supervisors or the county or the State General Assembly that we should be looking at putting official holidays into our calendar that are connected to religious or cultural days. I understand that we'll be getting more guidance, but I will say that there, this process also has not been brought up to the broader public. We are an elected body of the School Board. Our job is to represent our community, and if a task force made recommendations, which the Board directed you to get, it should have come to the Board. It shouldn't have gone directly to a Calendar Committee for the Board's consideration. In addition, this should have been included in the community survey to staff and families. It was not. So, as an elected body, we have no idea where our community is, and we should know that. I'm also concerned that when we look at what our community has said to us year in and year out of when they want to start school, when they want to end school, adding additional days here in a formal way is actually going to be in conflict to what our community has said. All that aside, it's really important that we do help our community understand how much we do value inclusion, and so I really like the idea that under your direction, we have not done a good job of honoring these religious holidays for students and employees. You need, your and your team need to do a better job on that, and we need to have formalized language to ensure and hold you accountable for that. So, thank you.
Dr. Braybrand, would you like to respond to Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I certainly agree that we can do a better job in conveying the calendar expectations that we've had in counters past to make sure that we're being mindful of the diverse needs of our students and staff. Certainly, our students, as I went out last, over a year ago with Dr. Duran, our Chief Equity Officer at the time, and visited synagogues in our community, learning the impact of kids still having tests done on holy days for their faith. And we can do a better job of that. We do have information that we share when we put out our calendars, and we've done some improvement around those, noting those religious days. But I do think we can do better work at really creating a regulation that more specifically directs staff around how to support our students across all of the religious face that we have evidenced, and all of the cultures that we have in our system. We can do a better job of being clear what our expectations are for those kids on those observance days.
Thank you, colleagues. I know there are more questions and comments, so I would encourage you to raise your hands and get in the queue so we can go ahead and have a discussion. Dr. Anderson, followed by Dr.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get my microphone. Okay, thank you so much. I want to echo much of what has been shared by Ms. McLaughlin, and I also want to add two additional points. One is, I also want to be sure that we are being mindful of the impact that any calendar that we put together has on our employees. We have had, as of yesterday, in my count, I had had, and this is as of 5 o'clock yesterday, 269 emails from our support staff, and I know that was a count that ended at 5:00, and I watched them all come throughout the night and through this morning. So, I'm missing at least 100, 150 easily, but they've been very vocal in terms of what the impact is on their work and their ability to, one, earn an income within their time with us, and also the impact of what this means for them when they try to procure other work during the summer weeks to help supplement their income. This is important to our community here at Mason because we have a lot of that staff that lives here. So, I want to be mindful that in all of our redirection, that this is also a, something that we're keeping in mind, as well as what does this mean for the rest of our families who depend on our schools for certain supports? I'm very mindful of what this means for our families who rely on our schools for lunch and breakfast and those meals. I'd like to be sure that we keep that in mind. And the second piece that I want to put forward is, we also know that we're coming out of a pandemic. We have had a lot of impact in terms of continuity of learning, opportunity for our students to have instruction that is more traditional in nature. I also want to be sure that we're mindful of that as we are hopefully turning a corner on this pandemic. What is it that, whatever decisions that we make, I'd like the analysis of the impact on the instructional, on the instruction for our students, on their learning opportunities. And I'm not sure if that piece has already been put up for the public to see, but I would like for us to dig a little bit in terms of the data that is provided when we're looking at average absences and, and what we see on these days where students are absent. I'd like for, also, and I don't know if this is posted, but I'd like for someone to speak to, what is the impact on our staff? Can you speak to that, please, someone? And then I have one more question. Because I don't think that's posted.
Yeah, it is posted. We have posted the information to Board Docs. I know that was referenced just a few minutes ago. It is posted. I'm sorry if there was a delay in having that posted earlier this morning. As far as staff impacts, Mr. Smith or Mr. McDonald, do you want to talk a little bit about absences of staff and impacts?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Braybrand. So, just two things. One, in the document that's posted to Board Docs, there is an overview of the staff absences and the comparison to the average listed. And so, we do see that there are, just like the students' groups, an impact on staff, the frequency of staff absences. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we do currently have a regulation in place for staff who wish to request leave during or to observe religious observance. And so, that regulation does govern that process and give employees a pathway to expressing the need or the desire to take leave in honor of that religious observance.
Okay. Thank you. Having said that, since I don't think I had a chance to see that, I want to reserve my time for a little bit later on. Thank you, Ms. Bukarski.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Keys Gamara.
Yes, thank you. I will try to get my camera on. I think I had difficulty earlier. Yeah, for some reason, it's not coming. It won't. Okay. Hopefully, that works. Okay. Thank you, guys, for the presentation today. I'm going to start with a simple question because I know I've received, at last count, as of last night, about 700 letters on this topic. Mr. Armando, with respect to the Committee, were they, did they, as part of their purpose, did they believe they were selecting a calendar on behalf of the School Board?
Well, I can say that in our presentation and in our initial meetings, we informed them, and we always had the language from the actual follow-on motion on all of our agendas, which identified that this was a group that was brought together to provide recommendations. And so, the language from the follow-on motion was always present on our agendas.
Okay. I appreciate that. I've received, and the reason for that question is I received a number of letters stating that some of letters stating that some promises have been made and I just wanted to make it clear for the community where we started. And so my goal is to, and I'm sure many of my colleagues, is to really make sure that we are creating and following through with our promise of a caring culture and that we are doing our due diligence with respect to finding out what religious and cultural observances create high absenteeism in an effort to support our students both academically as well as emotionally. And so at whatever point, Madam Chair, you would like for me to submit some language to that effect, I would like to submit a motion asking the superintendent to give greater guidance with respect to those identified days. Given the list that we have, I don't know that we will ever be able to fully recognize all of the religious and cultural observances, but I do believe that this board can provide some guidance and that the regulation can protect both our students and staff to make sure that they are respected on those days. The other question, thing I wanted to mention is Indigenous Peoples' Day. I just want to put my plug in for that because I know in the community, that day becomes a time for sporting events, arts and all sorts of things where students have an opportunity to compete and come together. So I would ask my colleagues to consider that as well. And Ms. Bukarski, if you want to give me some guidance as to how you'd like for me to handle that language, I'll be happy to write something up and send it to our legal counsel and whomever else you want me to.
Yeah, Ms. Kizgamar, if you'd like to do that and we can present it at the end here or if you would prefer at our board meeting this week, I will leave that up to you.
Okay, thank you. Those were my comments. If anybody had, you know, Dr. Bray Brandon, if you wanted to speak to making sure we have that language so that as we flush out what these additional important days are, we are making sure at a minimum, we are providing guidance so that our students know that they are protected and they will not be harmed either academically or emotionally.
Yes, Ms. Kizgamar, as far as our impact on students, we have provided guidelines, but I don't know that we have ever produced a formal regulation around that impact for kids. And that's something I can certainly go back and work with staff on to create a more formal set of processes around the protection of our students and staff on those days. We have provided guidelines, but I I do not believe we've had a formal regulation from the superintendent's office around this topic and can certainly work on whatever follow-on motion or directive the board gives now or Thursday around that as we work on our calendars for next year.
And as we develop these holidays, Dr. Bray Brandon, I would ask you to consider perhaps identifying what I will call blackout days so that students know that should they choose to be absent on those days, they will not be penalized.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kizgamar, Ms. Marin?
Thank you. Yeah. So, you know, on the one hand, we've had this outpouring of advocacy about the school year calendar and it shows that it's essential for us to look at it. And, you know, the legal council have received conversations among board members, board members with staff, you know, have all brought to light a lot more information and angles than we knew about previously. The downside of that is that we've had many people invested in advocating for a need, not just, you know, for last year, but in previous years. And that process culminated in some expectations that was hosted by the division on a certain outcome. Ultimately, you know, this is an operational decision. There's some policy here, but this is really about operations and we need to center what's best for kids. And that includes first and foremost academics, but the social emotional toll of the school year calendar and also the well-being of those who rely on critical services like meals, like safety, like special education services. So, you know, part of what's best for kids, certainly not the only thing, but is making sure we have staff who meets their needs. And the advocacy we've heard from our support services staff, our bus drivers, shows that there is a concern that our staff are very concerned about losing paid days off. And this is a large issue that really spans HR and how we schedule our bus drivers and, you know, giving people, you know, living wage jobs. And that's, you know, a huge challenge that we have to grapple with outside of the span of the calendar or anything. And I hope that we can, we can do that kind of work that's going to take way more than just from within our school division. You know, I think that while we've started to see some data about student absenteeism on certain days and students who are out, you know, I know that it can be stressful for students when they have to miss dates and staff have to, you know, make decisions. Even though we have constraints and some information now about, you know, what's legally within our realm to deal with, we also need, as a schools community, to practice collectively what it means to honor different needs in our community. You know, we can't have this analysis about our calendar pit interests against interests and who's more worthy or not. You know, this is the essence of what a caring culture is and, you know, I'm just really aggravated that it's come to this spot. I'm glad that we seem to try and be finding better information to include in this process, but it's just a really tough spot to be in and I'm hoping to the superintendent that you can find better options for us to look at quickly because we need to decide this very soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders next.
Thank you, and I'm glad to follow Ms. Marin because as somebody who was on the previous board, it was with all good intention that this task force was established and the concept behind the task force was not for to make decisions on the calendar, but to address issues that included, you know, how do we ensure that we have a caring and inclusive culture in the pluralistic environment that we live in? And how do we, how do we embrace that pluralism and recognize the needs of different religious faiths in how we approach our calendar, but also how we approach our curriculum, how we approach our engagement with our employees? And that task force was supposed to come back to the board with the recommendations or those recommendations. And I think that most of us who were on the board at that time thought that that was going to come back in the form of a formal presentation. I just learned today that it was presented to us at an end-of-the-year ombudsman report, which is great, except given that we were in the middle of dealing with COVID, that was somehow lost in the process. And I am sorry to hear that. But I do want to find a way that we can, we can honor the rich diversity in our community while be recognizing that we are a secular school system. And so there has to be a way of doing to. I am very supportive of, rather than guidelines, having a detailed regulation and being more transparent in setting those dates that are, we know are important to our community and so therefore we should recognize that we should not be doing things like proms, graduation, testing or anything else, just kind of to level set in a couple of areas. One, there are 565 different religious organizations in Fairfax County. That is a huge number and we need to figure out how we recognize that there, within that, there are multiple faiths and how do we, how do we recognize and embrace that rich culture that comes to us by being a pluralistic community? The second piece is regarding the caring culture in our staff. By either starting the school year earlier or ending later, we negatively impact the ability of staff to have second jobs. And unfortunately, because of the jobs that they perform within our school system, we do not pay them enough, nor do we have the budget to pay them on a full-time basis. So during the school year, over 26% of our staff have second jobs. That number most likely goes up during the summer. So we need to be aware that at one point is that for every day that we don't have our staff paid, it's a 0.55 decrease in their annual earnings. Thank you.
Thank. Would you like to respond, Dr. Bray Brandon, or?
Well, thank you for the feedback. As I said, even to Ms. Kizgamar, I think you're right, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Formalizing guidelines are our lowest level of official communication. Regulation comes out from the superintendent. And again, the board's been clear, you know, with policy about having an equity policy. So I think we need to be clear about how do we support our students and staff around this matter. And again, if we can talk about, and I think we're having a conversation now about asking me, and I certainly would support, creating a much more formalized, creating a regulation that formally goes through all the ways in which we are going to direct staff and students to how they are going to be included and respected as they honor cultural observances and religious holidays. And I think the reality is, one thing I know that the task force told us is our ability to implement that well over the last several years has fallen short. It has fallen short. I take responsibility for that and we do need to do better and we need to elevate the direction that we are giving everyone in the system about how that should be done. And it's clear to me that the board is interested in getting more from us and my recommendations about how to do that better.
Thank you, Ms. Toll.
Thank you. I do want to just say a huge thank you to the community members that have reached out to me and that I have talked to and read emails from over the past weeks. You've really helped me to see very clearly the number of issues and insufficiencies that we have here in SCPS that we need to deal with around cultural and religious needs. As we discussed, our school calendar is just one, and Karen Corbett Sanders has said it very well, it's just one possible way to, you know, deal with some of this. And I look forward to seeing, you know, what staff will be bringing back to us, looking for a revised option that is data-driven and inclusive, but yet flexible. And I think with the understanding that, you know, we'll be able to come up with a, you know, a calendar for the next year, but this is a process that will have to be iterative and changing over time and that these conversations will need to be continued, you know, as we do that. And I think that brings us to, you know, kind of this conversation that we come around to that we need perhaps, you know, to create a new policy. And I'm happy to, you know, dive into the harder work to create a policy around putting together our calendar, you know, as we move forward and what that iterative process will be, you know, in the future as we do our calendar, you know, each year, year after year. And as Dr. Bray Brandon, I'm happy to, you know, hear your willingness to work on a regulation and how overall we treat the religious needs and, you know, religious observances of our students, our families and our staff. And I'm looking forward to working with you on that. I was just going to ask because I have gotten many, many emails from staff, of course, on, you know, their concerns around the numbers of days off. And I thought I might ask Mr. Drager to just talk a little bit about how the, what's the real concern there? I think it might be helpful for the public just to understand, you know, what that staff concern is with the salary around the holidays. We could just spend a minute on that.
Yes, indeed. So we have, many of our transportation employees and food service personnel are on a bi-weekly pay cycle. And as part of that pay cycle, if there are instances where there are not workdays, they do see an adjustment to their check for that occurring. Ultimately, over the course of the year, as we talked about calendars, that may look a little bit different in terms of the number of days off or how long they stretch over the year. Ultimately, over the course of the year, those employees are still, still have the same number of workdays and are paid the same. It's just a matter of how stretched out that becomes depending on the gap between the first day of school and the last day of school and the number of days off or unpaid non-workdays that occur between those two points.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Toll. And Mr. Fresh?
The button was not pressing when I pressed it. I apologize. Thank you. First, I want to start by acknowledging my privilege in this situation. While I am not religious, growing up, my family celebrated Christian holidays like Christmas and Easter and my partner took the things at a church choir. So it's not lost on me that as we talk about the values of pluralism and the secular nature of our school system, that the traditions of my upbringing have never once been on the chopping block when we've been considering this school calendar. So I just need to put that out there. I do have some questions for staff. Dr. Bray Brandon, how did we get to a point where staff has presented these calendar options to the board and without first vetting them with legal counsel? And correct me if that's not a good interpretation or right, correct interpretation of what's happened here.
So what I would share is obviously we work with division counsel on a number of issues. We don't have every one of our task forces. We only have four lawyers in our entire system. And, you know, our counterpart in the county has 10 times that amount. So we are stretched thin to have legal counsel available at every task force. Of course, we check in to make sure we're not doing anything illegal, but obviously the work around inclusion and calendars and religious expression and of course being careful around the establishment clause of the First Amendment are very nuanced. And it is a fair point that I take that I did not direct the division counsel at the beginning of this process to sit in to help guide or shape those conversations around some of those very nuanced issues. That is something I could have and should have done better.
So there, I apologize. Go ahead.
No, no. That being said, there's, there's, you know, of course, we did check in with division counsel before checking and sharing these calendars and we don't believe there are anything here that is illegal. But are there things in here that are important to be able to, you know, better, some nuances that could be better addressed or some questions that arise as we go into this work that could have been better addressed with legal counsel throughout? Yes, and I did not ask the division counsel to do that.
When, when were they asked? My understanding would be that it would have been after our last conversation about the calendar. Is that right? And just to be clear, we weren't just presented with task force calendars, right? We were presented with three options.
Yes, you were presented with three options just, you know, whatever it was, a month ago now. And, you know, we had reviewed all of those calendars as we presented them to you. But again, from the very beginning of the task force, we did not have legal counsel there providing nuance to some of the questions that may have come up and did come up around how to promote inclusion in the calendar, but how to also be careful around balancing First Amendment rights of expression, equal protection and being careful about the establishment clause of not, again, promoting or having excessive entanglement with religion.
So Mr. Foster was asked for his legal counsel before we discussed this at our previous work session.
Mr. Foster certainly had a review of the final calendars we presented. Mr. Foster was not detailed involved in the creation of each of the calendars.
I think what I'm trying to get at here for people that might be watching is the board is in this weird predicament where we've been presented and the community's been presented with three calendars. And now we're saying that there are legal questions around the calendars. And this is our second conversation in public about the calendars. Certainly, this did not go as any of us would have planned, right? It's not even how calendars are usually done, right? But this has not been a normal year. So no slack there on anybody. My question is, how are we only hearing these concerns now and not before our previous conversation?
Well, what I would say is, some of the sharing of the calendars and the questions that have been raised have, have raised some more nuanced issues that I did not ask the division counsel to address, that we are reviewing and addressing now. And that's as simple as I can say it. And the reason it was, and it was nuanced, and, and it was not something where he was in from the beginning to be able to provide that nuance to the task force when the recommendations were done.
I think that's for you, not for me, right? Yours is far more dramatic. Mine is very old school, I think. So I think our ombudsman said that the task force was told that they would be making recommendations to the board for the calendar. Can, can we, can you point to what happened after those recommendations came in and walk us through what staff did after receiving those recommendations? How much time was spent analyzing those? And how much time was spent creating that third option?
Yeah, I, I'll speak for myself and say, what happened? If you look at that timeline, it was presented to the calendar committee in February. And then COVID happened. That's what happened. COVID happened, and my time has been almost overwhelmingly spent around return, which we are, we're calling now, and not, and not the calendar.
I appreciate that. And then one last thing, because I have a feeling my buzzer is going to go any, just any second. When we talk about regulations allowing staff to take religious leave, I just want to be clear that staff can request religious leave, and that doesn't mean that the principals, their supervisors, have to grant religious leave. Is that correct?
I, I will defer to Sean, but I believe that is correct. Is that right, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, that is correct.
It's still subject to approval by the superintendent.
And. All right. So I just want to be clear as we have the conversation around that, that that's the case. In the same way that we've, we've instructed staff not to have exams or, or other things around holidays that would impact students, it still happens. And there's my, there's my, my hook.
And Mr. Frisch, what I'd say there is, you're, you're, you're putting your finger, you're, you're nailing something that I think some other board members have expressed. We have not elevated guidance to the, to the level of regulation, formal direction from the superintendent about what will be done or not done, what will be granted or not granted, what will be allowed or not allowed, and had consequences sufficiently enforced so that people, school to school, feel that all these religious and cultural days, that they feel respected or included. It's happened to, the guidance provided has not been consistently followed, and it has left many members of our community and staff not feeling valued, which I know this board doesn't want, nor do I. And it is something we have to work on.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Ms. Eisner Heizer, you're up next.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? So I want to say that first, this has been very, very difficult for me personally and as a board member, this whole process. And, and the most difficult part is the fact that it seems to have pitted three very important needs. Our staff needs for pay and, and security for their positions, our staff needs for cultural competency, our students' needs for consistency, and their need for cultural competency. And finally, trying to be a more, a system that is more reflective and respectful of our diverse communities and that embraces pluralism versus assimilation. So my first question against Dr. Williams, can you talk a little bit more? You mentioned that early slide about pluralism versus assimilation and decentralizing dominance, and how that fits into our notions of a caring culture that's in our strategic plan?
I'm here. Thanks for the question. I think what I would say is, you know, we, we could have a larger macro level discussion about these issues, right? The, the question of what is our responsibility as populations change and shift in all kinds of ways? To shift our policies, practices, and procedures to be responsive? And, and that responsiveness is not just, you know, what options are available. It is, do you actually see me? Like, I'm here every day. Do you see me? How do you honor? How do you honor me? Right? And so when we talk about harm, I would offer an organization that is not doing the work of, you know, speaking directly to student, staff, and its population is causing some harm, right? A part of our humanity is recognition. And so I think that in many ways, what we're talking about in this particular instance, while, you know, a microcosm of maybe larger cultural issues, is the wrestling around how we do this. And it's not easy to come to a position around it. And so again, I want to just honor the challenge in this moment. But it is the question that will keep presenting itself to us in one form or another. And it absolutely undergirds this larger question of what it means to be a caring culture. So I would offer that in response to your question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I really, the word you say, do you see me? How do you honor me? That really resonated with me. And obviously, this has been my own personal conflict, because I have extreme concerns about the need for consistency in our support staff and, you know, the equity. And I think, I know there can be a better path forward. That doesn't seem to choose one or the other to focus on primarily. And, and I, in conversations, and really a lot of deep thought this weekend, in conversations with some of my colleagues, we've already talked about what could be a better path forward. So I would challenge you, Dr. Brabran, and your staff, as you work with your division counsel and with Dr. Williams, can we find a better path forward than any of these three options that does a better job of balancing these, you know, different needs and consistency and still sees our cultures and aims for more pluralism? So that's my question for you.
Well, sure. Well, you know, we presented three calendars, and if directed, we can go back and try to find, you know, another, another approach if these three are lacking. So the answer is yes, we can do that if, if, if that is what is asked.
So if you do not have board direction to do that, would you just be looking at these three calendars and working with division counsel in terms of the additional legal advice?
That's correct. If, if, if not directed to do an additional calendar, I would look at the three and with the review of division counsel, make a final recommendation to you all among the three that we have, with any changes that I think would need to be done.
I would just posit that's troubling to me, because I, I think that there's fairly easy path forward that could be a better path. But I hear what you're saying, and I'm just going to put out there that when we talk about regulations, first thing, I want to ask you, Dr. Brabran, to make sure whatever regulation you put out does not put the burden on the student. Does not single out the student needing to ask for this, but rather, the burden is on the building-level leadership to ensure implementation of what are regulations. Because as somebody who did grow up, you know, in a, you know, California school system, the words, "Do you see me?", and the construct and culture that we still have in our schools, to Mr. Frisch's point, is still one of dominance. And if we're going to make it a pluralistic school system, we're going to make it a caring culture that reflects diversity, we need to take the burden off the people that we're trying to include in that pluralistic community. And right now, the burden is coming from this people. I'm going to have to go back, but I will leave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. And before Ms. Darnak Kofax goes on, I just want to say that we are butting up against our time. We have a joint budget meeting with the Board of Supervisors. So we will have to adjourn here at 1:15. And if I could just ask my fellow colleagues if there is no objection that we come back at 3:00 PM and continue this conversation and go through the queue? So if there are no objections? Are there objections? Sorry, the hands were up. Dr. Anderson, did you have something to say? Mr. Frisch? Do you have an objection, Mr. Frisch, to reconvening at 3:00? Okay, I will say that as a no. So please go ahead, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and then we will try to wrap up here by 1:15. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate all of my colleagues who have, have talked about their own personal situations, and I will share that in a moment. But as you can all see, we are struggling here. We are struggling because we, as a board, do understand that, "Do you see me?", quote. And part of our challenge for having this recognition is, how do we do it in the constructs of all the other mandates that we have as a system? Making sure we get in our days, making sure, you know, we have a summer break, making sure we maintain all of the things that our current calendar people like, the winter break in, in December to mid-January. So a couple of things that I'm thinking of, and I heard my colleagues say, I do believe we need a more formal reg, regulation on how to move forward on this. I do not believe we should pit cultures against each other, because we must do what is best for all kids. And our system is a pluralistic community, and we must, we must make sure we do that. Personally, my immediate family is both, has minority religious status, if you will. And my husband is Jewish. I am Orthodox Christian. None of the holidays, of those holidays were ever recognized with me growing up in my school or my children in Fairfax County public schools as part of their community. So I do understand that. But as we look through the list, and Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned the number of, of religious groups, and if we look at who, where the most absences are, we need to make sure the community understands that if we're to go down that road, to, to use that. But another option, which constituents, several constituents have brought to my attention, were allowing students to be excused for celebrations or cultural observances with floating holidays. And I, I know we say we do that, but, you know, you can, parents can always allow anyone to take that off. But I would do it much in the way, I would ask Dr. Brabran for consideration when you're looking at other options, for much in the way we did allow our, our students to participate in civic engagement. Because that was a, it was, it was enacted into regulation. And again, my colleagues talked about building managers needing, must being able to grant staff the option and not to put them in the position where, well, we're going to have professional development on this day, that's your religious holiday. And that often occurred on the Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanahs while I, during my tenure on the board. That's kind of untenable. That's either saying, you know, what, what do, what do you respect more? I'm here for my career, or I must take off this religious observance because you're not granting it to me. So I would ask you, Dr. Brabran, if I could just finish up, to say, when you were looking at these things, please look at the option of formalizing floating days where kids can take that in addition to whatever other options you may bring to us.
Sure, can do that. Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Okay, I think it is 1:07. Ms. Cohen, would you like to go ahead and try to get your turn in?
Sure. You know, I just wanted to say that I think one really important piece that we have not talked about is ensuring that our kids are not disadvantaged for observing their religious holidays. And there is no question that that has been the case, not just in history, in, in very recent history, and not just in a building, system-wide. When we talk about, you know, COGAT's being on religious holidays and what that actually meant for students who had to come back and then sit in the library for three days, and then miss four days of instruction to receive the test. There is no question that there are policies and practices that we have here that do disadvantage our, our families who observe. And so obviously, right now publicly, people are seeing the struggle of how do we figure out what that looks like? Is it days off in a calendar? Is it regulations? Is it? But it's something. And I, I do remain incredibly frustrated that we didn't translate all of the advocacy that we've heard in the past about these days being trampled on, that we didn't translate that into a regulation. I mean, no offense at all, Dr. Brabran, but guidelines and guidance in this system are just, appear to be meaningless at this point. And I, I hate it. I recognize the position that puts you in, that everything must be codified, but I, I don't, I don't see it. I don't see guidelines ever having a real impact on the day-to-day lives of our kids. And I don't know why that is. Maybe that's a conversation for another day. But I agree, there has to be a regulation. You know, I, I remain incredibly concerned about the rise that we're seeing right now in biased crimes and hate crimes against our Asian community, our Middle Eastern community, our Jewish community. You know, there is no question, there is a problem here, and we play a role in it. And how do we, how do we fix it? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I, you know, to me, the idea too, that the principals are, or team members are able to say, "I'm so sorry, someone already took off for Rosh Hashanah, so you can't", like, that has to end. And I know Ms. Omeish has had a forum topic hanging out there for a while that we need to change that regulation. I support that wholeheartedly. You know, the other is, I do think we have to go back to the drawing board. If there's legal guidance that changes your recommendation, I mean, this is very clearly operationally-based problem. And I, I think it's unreasonable to have school board members try to henpick to death this calendar. We really need you to come back and say, "This is our best guidance, looking at, at everything." And was the process, to Ms. Bukarski's point, was it equitable in how we even came to figure out what different groups need? So that, that's my advocacy, is go back and figuring out what is disadvantaging kids, and let's proactively figure out how to fix that.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Colleagues, it is 1:10. We are going to pause here, take a very short break before our 1:30 joint budget meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and we will reconvene at 3:00 PM. So thank you. Enjoy your short break.